We were called to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, seven P. M., Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, please.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. And before we observe a moment of silence, I want to recognize, I can see out here that uh, I think we have quite a few students and uh, if, just out of curiosity, how many of you are in Mr. Two Arts class? Yeah, Mr. Two Art always sends us a group and it looks like we've got some from some other, other classes too. It's uh, great to have you all here and uh, participating and seeing how local government works. Thank you all for coming out. I would ask that you would uh, observe a moment of silence with me, please. Thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add item twelve A to new business, cool branch funding, and also to matters from the work session is thirteen A, finance committee recommendations.
I'll second those.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on the emotion, on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we're down to consent agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
I make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes. Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Mr. Ingram seconded.
Mr. Ingram seconded, there you go.
I did reassure Dr. Miller.
Motion carries unanimously. I, I do want to remind the public before we move, move to presentations, uh, we've actually been here since three thirty this afternoon, and as I've said to you many, many times, um, we do quite a bit of work during our work session at four thirty, so if you want to know what uh, a lot of the internal discussions are and what's uh, you know, detail into the weeds information, I would highly recommend and encourage everyone to come to that uh, work session. Today, we started with the finance committee meeting, they're certainly available for you to see on uh, on uh, live stream, so I would really encourage you to watch those because uh, a lot of really in the weeds information is revealed then, uh, so that's why you see us sometimes, seems like we're moving through an agenda pretty quickly, it's because we've already addressed all of those issues and, and asked a lot of those questions during the work session, so please feel uh, free to attend those, they're open to the public, and we encourage you to attend those. Thank you. We're down to item eight, presentations, intern, intern recognition presentation, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, seemed like just a few weeks ago, uh, we came to you and asked for some funds for a...
It's on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
If I put my mouth right on top of it, you, you know, just a few weeks ago, we came and asked you for some funds for a student internship program. School was going to be out in just a few weeks, we didn't know if it was going to be a success or not, and um, I made a few phone calls to certain people, you know, and um, I can't take credit because these people made it happen, and um, um, uh, um, at this time, I want to recognize Dana Wilson with the um, Institute, and um, she's got some of the people with her that actually made this happen, and uh, we're going to do a short presentation to the board and an update of the program, and uh, you see some of the students here this evening, and um, I would just add the, the quality of those student interns was just outstanding, and I think our future will be very bright.
Amen.
Because of these students. I'll ask our folks to step back.
I am not Dana Wilson. I'm Natalie Hodge, and I'm the special projects coordinator for the West Piedmont Workforce Development Board, and I'm honored to stand beside Dana Wilson, who has been a pivotal member of this team, and has really put in a lot of hard work to bring us all together to put together a very successful summer youth program. I'm so proud of the work that has been done for this, want to thank you immensely for your investment of community dollars into the future of our workforce, but I don't have to say it, we can show it, and Dana will talk a little bit more about partners and participants, so you'll hear firsthand about the success of this amazing program. Thank you. Surprised you. I'm Dana Wilson, I serve as the uh, work-based learning program coordinator at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. I've been blessed to be a part of the program, this pilot internship program from the beginning, from start until end, which is today. Thanks to your funding support, we were able to partner with the West Piedmont Workforce Development Board, like Natalie had said, and Virginia Career Works, put together meaningful internships for Pennsylvania County students. In less than two months, we secured twenty-five internship placements in both county administration and private sector employers. After the application and interview process, we ended up with fifteen students placed in departments within Pennsylvania County Government and uh, docu-systems, as well as Pennsylvania County Schools. These fifteen students represent all four high schools in Pennsylvania County, and several of those students and their families are present tonight. We promised to provide a detailed uh, report after we have um, all of our evaluations completed, but for tonight, we just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for understanding the value of internships for our youth, and for being willing to lead the way for this pilot program. Also, thank you to Dr. Miller and to David Smitherman, who are great advocates for this program before we began, and of course, Mr. Richard Hicks, who has been a constant source of support from start to finish. Thank you to the supervisors, Kim Vanderheide in Finance, Caleb Ayers in Public Relations, Justin Price in Parks and Rec, Brent Weinhoff at the Pet Center, Scott Budd in I.T., and Emily Ragsdale in Community Development. Thank you to the Pennsylvania County School District's I.T. and Maintenance Departments, and to Docu-Systems David Hobson, um, who was not able to come today. We look forward to continuing our partnership for future summer interns, thank you so much, and we have someone here, Angela Rigney from the school system, who would like to step up and say a few words as well. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Warren, Board Supervisors members and guests. Again, I'm Angela Rigney, Director of Career and Technical Education for Pennsylvania County Schools, and on behalf of Pennsylvania County Schools, I would like to take this opportunity to extend my sincere thanks to everyone who worked collaboratively in a short amount of time to provide the Pennsylvania County Summer Youth Internship Program. When you have a committed individuals from multiple organizations, which included Pennsylvania County Schools, Pennsylvania County, West Piedmont Workforce Development Board, Ross Works, Virginia Career Works, and the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research, who are working to achieve a common goal of success for our community and region by providing engaging opportunities for growth of our youth, it is to be commended. The Virginia Department of Education and Pennsylvania County Schools recognizes the importance of high-quality work-based learning opportunities. High-quality work-based learning experience is comprised of school-coordinated workspace experiences that are related to student career goals, interests, and are integrated into instruction and performed in partnership with local business and industry organizations. Work-based learning experiences provide students the opportunity to apply classroom instruction in a real-world business or service-oriented work environment. Students' knowledge, skills, and attitudes are enhanced by participation in supervised, authentic experiences. Work-based learning experiences reinforce our Virginia's five Cs: critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creative thinking, and citizenship, by allowing students to apply these skills in real-world business or service-oriented work environments. The Pennsylvania County Summer Youth Internship Program is just the beginning of what we hope will be a stepping stone into the future of work-based learning opportunities for our region. There is great need to provide these unique experiences for both our students and employers. This will allow both educational institutions and business partners to work collaboratively to ensure we have a skilled workforce with a work ethic, knowledge, and skills to be the best employee to a business and industry. Again, I want to thank everyone who played an integral part in making this program a success this year, and I look forward to expanding the opportunities for our community and region in the future. At this time, I'm going to ask one of our interns, Evan Lee, to come forward and share his opportunities and experiences this summer.
Ms. Rigney, before you leave, on behalf of our board, I think we want to say thank you to you and Dr. Jones and the school system, uh, and this just gives us a platform and an opportunity to do it, gentlemen.
That's right.
For everything our school system has done for the career and technology community, we've had unprecedented economic development growth in this county over the last several years, and a lot of that, a lot of that goes to what you all did and have done in our school system in Pennsylvania County, and our region is blessed and has been a real benefactor of what our school system has done, not only for Pennsylvania County, but it stretches out to the entire region, and that's a, a big part of why we have seen the economic development that we have, so I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly, and I know all of my colleagues agree, we've been very supportive of our school system.
Absolutely.
Uh, and I'm sure we will continue to be, but thank you so much for the great job on that aspect, and we wanted to be able to say that publicly. So, if, if any of my colleagues have any other comments they'd like to make in addition to that, we're going to break from the standard protocol tonight and offer those words if you'd like to. Ms. Dean?
Well, it's a no-brainer, we have the best school system and the best teachers.
Absolutely.
And uh, we're working on facilities, but thank you guys for all that you do, we're very proud of you. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd just like to talk about the Skills USA competition, um, you know, to me, it's at the athletics of tradesmanship, right? We, we recognize um, our sports teams, we recognize um, our winners as individual right there at Skills USA, and uh, you know, I, I tell people all the time, you know, if four-year colleges are great, but if not, you really need to take a serious, hard look at getting a trade and, and getting a job in the workforce, and there's no better way to get started, so thank you for, for all that.
Ms. Scares, you have your thing.
I'd just uh, like to tell you how much we appreciate it from an economic development standpoint, we just uh, we've got some announcements coming out, and I think, talking to the execs of that company, the big focus for them was schools, and they really appreciate it, that all our schools were accredited and all the blue ribbon medals and stuff, so for us, it really comes, comes back with uh, for economic development when these people come in and they do the research and realize how great our schools are, so I, I want to thank you for that as well.
Ms. Dudley?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, thank you so much, the, I would say the kids, but that shouldn't be an insult, you're young adults now, appreciate it, uh, and also, you probably don't realize how much our folks leaned on you when you was our interns, uh, how you helped our folks out, uh, they went to you for certain answers because they didn't have it in their own brain, so thank you guys so much, appreciate you guys coming up with this. Dr. Jones, uh, always a pleasure, thank you so much for everything that you've done, um, everything that you've done for me as well, thank you.
Dr. Miller, you have any words?
Yes, indeed. Just wanted to say that um, I've been around Pennsylvania County Schools since nineteen fifty-six, and that's been a long time, and Dr. Jones and everybody that's associated with the school system, thank you, and let's continue the forward progress up higher and better as we go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Davis?
Yes. I want to thank the school system because uh, the ones we, the one we have in Pennsylvania County, I've always been supportive of our school system, we've always been key, well along with several other of my colleagues, uh, to support the school system, we've been on this board since, since day one, I want to thank you for that, uh, and you guys being the recipient, and we can't do enough for you, and uh, but it's a win-win with our interns, I'd want to thank the youth, you guys, uh, you gave, uh, you gave some good insights to some of our staff, and we needed that because it's the youth, that's where you guys are, so we need you guys, okay? Real simple, and, and I appreciate that, I thought it was a win-win on this whole situation, and then I want to say to Dr. Jones, as well as you, as well as the entire staff of our school system, especially as well as our teachers, the unprecedented results of the challenges that we've had in the last year with the plandemic and other matters, I want to thank our school teachers because you guys, in my opinion, dug a lot of deep, dug very deep to support the educational process and to keep it alive, and I want to thank you each and every one for that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your kind words.
Yeah, back to, back to, back to you.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Can y'all hear me?
There you go, get into it, that's good.
Uh, my name is Evan Lee, as you said, I was a public relations intern with Caleb in county administration, uh, really enjoyed my time there, I met some fabulous people, went to some wonderful events, I met uh, two of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Davis, the first meeting I ever attended, and Dr. Miller, I met you at the uh, bridge ceremony, had a beautiful time, as I said. Dana Wilson actually asked me during my speech to talk about my education and career goals, and Dana, now is the time to say that was a mistake because I'm going to be very long-winded on that because I have a big plan, and um, if you listen to the Pitco Happenings, the podcast, you already heard me say this, but I'll say it again. Uh, I just graduated Tunstall High School in June, June second, uh, next week on Monday, will be my first day at DCC, I'm in the liberal arts program, I'll do three semesters there, I've already completed one semester, thank God for dual enrollment through the high schools, which is another great thing that our county has. Afterwards, I'll go to Everett to finish my bachelor's of arts with a major in English and a minor in history, and after that, I will take the LSAT, which is the entrance exam for law schools, and Lord willing, I will get into William and Mary Law School, the, where Mr. Chief Justice John Marshall, the great chief studied very long time ago. Afterwards, I will move to Richmond, where I'll begin my legal career, I hope to clerk for a municipal judge in Richmond, and then go to the Supreme Court and clerk for a justice. Afterwards, I'll go back to Richmond and be Assistant Commonwealth Attorney for Richmond, and then I'll run for Commonwealth Attorney. Afterwards, I hope to be, get the attention of my senators and have the president appoint me to the federal district, and then my biggest dream, I pray every night that one day I will be nominated for Supreme Court, hopefully, as Chief Justice.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
I like that.
My experience during this internship, during the course of that, I had to interview a lot of the Pennsylvania County's employees, whether it be uh, department directors, deputy directors, managers, and even just some employees. Two of those employees that I would like to point out would be the Commonwealth Attorney, Brian Haskins, and our county attorney, Vaden Hunt, I interviewed them for the website. Afterwards, our interview, I asked them a few questions about their law school experience and what they've experienced in the legal field, and I want to thank them because I got some great insights, so thank you, Vaden, and of course, if Mr. Haskins were here, I would thank him as well. But I also say that I better understand local government, I did attend two or three board meetings, I know I attended a finance meeting and I attended two or three of the regular meetings. I might better understand how local government works just by the meetings, but also because I worked in county administration, I understand how they function now, uh, listening and interviewing the directors of all the departments, I understand how they all work, and um, I got to meet fabulous people, loved them all, especially Holly Stanfield, mostly because she flattered me a lot, and with me, flattery will get you everywhere. Because of the boot camp that they had a week before internship actually started, I will say that I am much more comfortable going out into the workforce, and actually, the week or two after the internship ended, I put in an application for the city of Danville to be an administrative specialist for the Parks and Rec Department, which is just fancy terms for a secretary. I also put in an application to be a notary that the governor has approved of, I will go to the courthouse probably next week to take that oath, and I've already paid ninety-five dollars, and I'll make it a hundred when I go take my oath, because they always want to take your money, so I'm excited. And last but not least, I know he's not well-received in this part of the state, but I did meet Governor Northam, I was actually very excited about that as a person who wants to be in government, I got to meet an elected official, and um, I was petrified when I met him. Usually, I'm very outspoken, that's probably why I got asked to do a speech, but thanks to my coworker, Sierra Sylvie, she actually pushed me to go meet the governor because we had followed him from interview to interview, and I had given up hope, and she said, no, we're going to meet the governor, and we did. At his last interview, his press secretary pointed us, and I thought I was going to cry, but I didn't, I was, he was very nice, shook my hand, asked us about our career goals, and um, he's even signed my pocket constitution that I carry around, I was going to save that for Chief Justice John Roberts, but I ordered another one, so when I go to DC, I'll get him to sign it. And with that, I'll shut my big fat mouth and open it, I know a few other interns want to speak and some parents want to speak, but uh, thank you all again, I want to thank all of you for approving the money that we received, I want to thank uh, Dr. uh, Mr. Smitherman and Vaden Hunt, and Mr. Bumper, I can't remember your name, but thank you because you were some wonderful coworkers at county administration, thank you to my fellow interns, thank you to everyone I interviewed, thank you for the parents, your unwavering support, and again, I'll shut my big mouth and you can all speak.
Give that guy a hand, great, damn, I want it.
I don't know if I can follow that up very well, I'm sorry. Good evening, my name is Amelia Wilson, um, I'm speaking on behalf of the Youth Internship Program, and I first want to start by saying thank you for number one, investing in our youth. My daughter, Cora Wilson, had an internship at Community Development this summer, she was able to learn alongside talented and dedicated staff who took her under their wing to show her the need for planning, zoning, and obtaining inspections and permits in Pennsylvania County. She learned so much, and most importantly, felt a sense of purpose every day this summer as she was helping the staff. She saw what it was like to carry a, a job responsibility, and at the same time, she made friends her age from all over the county that were also interns. I learned from her that Mr. Richmond did an excellent job of showing the importance of teamwork at the workplace and highlighting skills needed. DCC also came to talk to the youth about furthering their education. And for number two, thank you for investing in our community, showing youth what jobs are available locally at a young age is an investment in our community because they may settle here after they graduate. I hope that you consider funding this very worthwhile program again next year, our youth greatly benefit from it, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up, I'm going to ask them, um, if our interns will come stand up here, so you can see who they were. Um, I believe we had several in attendance this evening. Um, our department directors will tell you, um, it was extremely beneficial for them, and I think they would tell you that they got meaningful work out of all these young adults, and uh, we would like to continue it in the future, but I also want to ask their parents to stand, um, because they definitely offer support, um, at home. Um, again, we just want to thank the board for their support, and um, these, you know, you can see, um, this is our future in Pennsylvania County, and it's very bright, I can remember, um, as a freshman, my first concern was the next party, and this guy talking about going to the Supreme Court, I mean, you know, he's already got it mapped all the way out to the top, and I think our future is very bright because of these young people, so again, thank you.
Mr. Hicks? Look, look, let's keep them down front, gentlemen, let's go down and get a picture with these young folks, this is our future. And the parents, have the parents come forward too, please, that are here. And the parents, have the parents come forward too, please, that are here. Okay, we're down to item number nine on the agenda. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not, does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up.
We don't have anyone, Mr.?
We don't have anyone, okay? We're down to public hearing. Rezoning public hearing. Pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of the Pittsavanna County zoning ordinance, the board of supervisors have been empowered to hear, decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pittsavanna County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and not, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pittsavanna County, its citizens and its prosperity. We're down to case number one, public hearing case R-21-018. And we will open that public hearing at seven-thirty. Ms. Rexel.
Case R-21-018, Old Dominion Agricultural Foundation Incorporated has petitioned to rezone 2.39 acres located off US Highway 29 North in the Bannister Election District from M1 Industrial District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with an adjacent parcel of land zoned A1. The Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that Mr. Harris is here, but if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them the best that I can.
Okay, any questions from the board from Ms. Rexel before we? Anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Okay, no one signed up. I close the public hearing at seven-thirty-one, and entertain your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Dr. Miller.
Case, in case R-21-018, I would like to move to approve the request to rezone from N1 to A1.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. We'll open publicly in case number two, case R-21-019 at seven-thirty-two. Ms. Rexel.
Case R-21-019, Wesley Francis has petitioned to rezone a total of 3.79 acres located on Brownsville Heights Lane in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with an adjacent property zoned A1. The Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wesley Francis is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Francis, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir? Okay. Any questions from the board?
I'm sorry.
It looks like everything surrounding this is A1, so.
Yes, sir. I don't know why I was.
Trying to figure out how you let this one slip by and become R1. Okay. Thank you so much. I close the public hearing at seven-thirty-four, and entertain your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Dr. Miller.
In case R-21-019, I move that we would approve the request to rezone from R1 to A1.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Property has been rezoned. Thank you all. Public hearing, I'll open the public hearing for case number R-21-020 at seven-thirty-five. Ms. Rexel.
Case R-21-020, Terry Parsons has petitioned to rezone 17.2 acres located on State Road 719, Ray Mill Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural use. The Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Terry Parsons is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Parsons, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
With the blessing of the Planning Commission, and they approved it, I hope that you all will too.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Any questions for Mr. Parsons?
No, sir. Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing at seven-thirty-six, and entertain your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, case R-21-020, I'd like to make a motion that we approve rezonation 17.20 acres from R1 to A1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Parsons, your property has been rezoned, sir. We're down to case number four, and we'll open that public hearing at seven-thirty-six. And it's case number R-21-012. Ms. Rexel.
Case R-21-021, Garnet Short has petitioned to rezone seven acres located on Gallows Road in the Stanton River Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural use. The Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Garnet Short is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Short, do you have anything you'd like to add? Ms. Short, would you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, any questions from the board members?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is in my district. I'm sorry.
We do have one citizen signed up to speak.
Apologies.
We have some people sign up?
We do, just one. Curtis Arthur.
Okay, Mr. Arthur. Questions been answered. Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Good to have you here tonight. I'll close the public hearing at seven-thirty-eight. Entertain your board's pleasure.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is in my district. And in case R-21-021, I recommend that we do rezone this property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Your property has been rezoned, Ms. Short. Thank you. We're down to case number five, and we'll open that public hearing at seven-thirty-nine. Ms. Rexel.
Case R-21-023, Lumpkin Enterprises has petitioned to rezone 1.803 acres located on Smith Mountain Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to A1 Agricultural District to consolidate with an adjacent parcel of land zoned A1. The Planning Commission recommended by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Don Shelton is here to represent the petition.
Okay.
He's not here, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, any questions from Ms. Rexel? Okay, I close the public hearing at seven-forty, and entertain your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-21-023, I make a recommendation that we approve the rezonation as presented in our packet.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to B. Public hearing, other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his, her name and district and/or his/her place of residence for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time, and unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time, absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We will open the public hearing for item number one, which is SR 794 Old Mine Road at seven-forty-one. And who's taking this?
I can take this. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Farmer has been approached by several citizens who are complaining about truck traffic on Old Mine Road. We've conferred with VDOT on this matter, and VDOT has recommended that the board conduct a public hearing tonight to consider the board supervisors giving a recommendation to VDOT to start the first step on potentially placing no-through-truck restrictions on Old Mine Road. And after the public hearing tonight, if the board desires to start that process, and this process would be, they would first do a formal study of it and bring us back the results and make sure that the no-through-truck signs are justified on this road. After the public hearing, and you listen to public comment, if the board desires to start the process by initiating the study or requesting VDOT to do so, you would just make a motion to adopt the Resolution 2021-08-03 that's included in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Anyone sign up?
Yes, Linwood Cook.
Chairman Warren, all of the supervisors, I'm Linwood Cook, retired Methodist minister who has a farm on Old Mine Road right across from Pontefort Church. What we've observed in our eight years of living there are cross-country eighteen-wheelers going by their GPS and turning on Old Mine Road to avoid going to Gretna and then turning on 40 to go to Rocky Mountain. It's a very narrow road. They've torn up the shoulders. Now, I know they are widening the road by a foot and putting down some asphalt, but I'm addressing the fact that these aren't local trucks. These are cross-country trucks. They come onto a unmarked road. There's no, no lines on this road. There's no speed limit signs. You actually have to get in the ditch sometimes when you meet an eighteen-wheeler who doesn't even know where he's at. He's taken his GPS routing and he's confused. Now, they are widening the road. Maybe twenty-five percent is completed by adding a foot of asphalt to what they've got already there. I have a good friend, Scott Thompson, who builds roads. And I talked about the substrate of this country road compared to 29 or 40. And what we have is a wagon road that became a gravel road, that became a tar and gravel road, that became a paved road. And it's nowhere built like 29 or 40 to carry an eighty-thousand-pound truck. Now, I'm only talking about cross-country trucks. We have local farmers who have eighteen-wheelers too, but, and they have to use the road. It's these eighteen-wheelers from cross-country that have never been on the road, and they come down to Pontefort Church, have to make a sharp left and right, and it's a very dangerous intersection for these big trucks. The other thing I'd like to address is also the high-speed traffic on weekends from the folks from North Carolina and Danville going to Smith Mountain Lake, anxious to get to the lake. And on Sunday nights, anxious to go back home. Dr. Paul Irwin, who has land on Old Mine Road, he refers to this as Old Mine Road Speedway, and talks about how fast people drive on this secondary road. I met with Virginia State Police, and they shared with me that in the year 2020, there were three major accidents at the intersection of Old Mine and Pontefort Road where Old Mine makes the sharp left and right. It's a dangerous situation there. It still is. We hear brakes squealing all the time because we're right there at the road. Many times, these eighteen-wheelers, following their GPS, will make the left turn onto Pontefort Road and forget to take the right turn back onto Old Mine, and they'll drive a couple hundred yards down Pontefort Road and then back up. Back up, back up, which is a dangerous situation. I've given you three, two photographs. I think you should have them on the desk. One is.
We do, but Dr. Cook, you got to wrap it up. Twenty, twenty-five seconds left, okay?
The first photograph is an existing 863 precedent that has been set by highway department. The second photograph is from a neighboring county where they recommend don't use GPS, and I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anyone else?
Tabby Yates.
Please, everyone, silence your phones while you're in the meeting.
Hi, supervisors, I am Tabby Yates. I live on Old Mine Road. Our family has farmland there. And if you've ever been to the lake, you've probably been on it, and as they refer to it, that's where the donkeys are, so that's where I live. Turning on 40, sharp onto Old Mine Road, it cuts back more than ninety degrees, so it's really hard to even get a car or four-wheel-drive pickup off the road there. And they have torn the intersection up trying to get them off there. Less than an eighth of a mile into it, it's a sharp curve that you can't see. It's a blind curve down the bottom, and VDOT has put a twenty-five mile an hour sign. It's a blind curve down the bottom, and VDOT has put a 25 mile an hour sign there, but if you meet a tractor-trailer, there's no room, even with the widening of the road. Ponty Road intersection, Dr. Cook was talking about, is a Z-type intersection, and it's tractor-trailers have really cut hard. They're tearing up the intersection there. Where I live, fragments have broken off, and water through the years has washed along the shoulder of the road and exposed the asphalt, and the shoulder's about this deep in places. They are widening it, but they're not built for 80,000 pounds. And there are several curves on down toward 29. Then you got the Anderson Mill intersection where you have to stop and cross over, which is a blind coming from the Country Club Way into 29. There, you cannot see until you get over it, and the tractor-trailer's pulling out. That's 70-foot machine has got to get moved before you get there. Very dangerous situation. I witnessed this a couple weeks ago. A school bus in front of my house early in the morning, it had to stop. And it's not a Lowe's truck, but you know the type of box trucks that Lowe's uses, relatively small compared to tractor-trailer. They both had to stop and get off the road to meet and pass each other there. And that's just a small box truck. So tractor-trailers, two of them meet, they have to stop, both get in the ditch to get by. It is a bad situation. And they really, they have torn the road up, and it is GPS. You know, they're following GPSs, and I get that, but I think Dr. Cook had referred to it later, they don't come back. We've got farm equipment up and down the road. Some of that is pretty wide, and it's difficult and dangerous situations with that as well. Widen road will help the current condition and help late traffic cars. They'll have wider roads to drive their boats on and stuff, or pull their boats through. Will help them out, but the road was not built to support 80,000 pounds, and it's just going to break up again over time. So we hope you would accept and, well, get it going to keep tractor-trailers off the road, we hope. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else sign up?
Yes. Tim Cook.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for this opportunity to express my concern for traffic situation on Old Mine Road. Specific as Reverend Cook and Taft have presented to 18-wheelers, through-truck traffic, box trucks, toy haulers, campers, boats, all of it is a hazard to our road and to our community. And as they've expressed, you know, this is a result of the GPS re-trafficking or rerouting these vehicles through this road. In the last eight years that I've been there, I resided at 2461 Old Mine Road. I have almost been in an accident because I was on a farm vehicle trying to make a left-hand turn into my farm access road, and traffic just goes right by me not paying attention to my signal. If I hadn't looked, I may probably have been here tonight. So it is a very dangerous situation there on Old Mine. My neighbors have had similar experiences. My sister-in-law was almost involved in a head-in collision on the road. And to further add to what's been spoken about the intersection of Ponty Road and Old Mine Road, we were working there at the church this past Saturday, August, was it August the 14th, in the morning, and we, there was almost two accidents at that intersection while, in that short period of time. One of the through-trucks missed the right-hand turn to go towards 29 on Old Mine Road, but rather than going down in a more safer place to turn around, backed up over this hill, and another car was coming, and it had to dart right behind him. You know, so there was an accident that almost occurred. And then another case of late traffic doing the same thing, missed, and then turned around into church parking lot, backed into the Ponty Road, and the car coming there had to lock it down, and there was almost a second accident there within a three-hour period. So, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to come and express our concerns, our desires to have the through-truck traffic at least minimized, if not totally contained. And, you know, we just appreciate you seriously giving this consideration and acting upon this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for anyone from the board before we close the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at 7:53, and Entertainer Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, but before I do, I just had a couple comments. I think as all the supervisors, we constantly get requests or texts, calls, emails regarding, you know, maybe a wish list or an idea and so forth. And some of those may be viable, and others may not be as much. But for me, on my four years on the board, you know, I look at patterns. I look at, you know, the recurrences of same items over and over. And this particular road has been that for me. It was not just these three gentlemen who came here tonight and thank you for all your hard work and bringing it again to my attention, but it's been other citizens over the years. And finally, I spoke with Jay Craddock, and just, you know, we need to do something here. It's just too much activity that the same people are reoccurring with the same issues. So with the help of Mr. Hunt, we were able to draft this resolution. And just want everyone to know that, you know, this is just the first step. You know, we have to submit it to the state. The county has no jurisdiction over roadways. And again, I'm going to echo the same comments here. I think this truly is a GPS item, and honestly, if this goes through, I think it would be doing those truck drivers a favor. I don't think if they knew the road going into it, they would never make that turn. If they could continue up 29 and hit 40 to go to their destination, which is more than likely Roanoke to get to the interstate, I think they would be much appreciative, honestly, than the stress that they're going to see when they make these turns. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2021-08-03.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank you three for coming, and the others, your wives that came, because I am concerned about your area too, not knowing Old Mine Road very well, but it speaks of a particular road, and my district has the same problems. And we're having heavy traffic that's eating up the roads, most of all that safety situation with the school bus and you guys out there. We got a problem there. But the second thing I want you to consider too, though, is that those truck drivers, many of them are foreign personnel. They have no idea where they're at, and they have to go on those GPSs, and I know I've dealt with them. So I agree, and I want something done about it as well. So I'm seconding, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Oh, I'm not seconding. Discussion.
I lost my place there, Doctor.
Okay, please record the vote.
It ain't the first time.
Motion carries unanimously. Move it forward. Thank you. We're down to public hearing number 2021-08-04, and Ms. Vanderheid, and I'll open the public hearing at 7:56.
Tonight's public hearing is being held to hear citizen input on the potential financing of solid waste capital improvements to include constructing and equipping three new convenience centers, constructing a new sale in the county's landfill, and acquiring equipment for use at the landfill. The board has applied to the Virginia Resources Authority to secure financing not to exceed $9 million to cover these projects, as well as refinancing the landfill portion of the 2018 A bonds issued for landfill equipment. This public hearing was published in the Chatham Star Tribune on August 4, 2021, as well as August the 11, 2021, which meets the statutory requirement. After tonight's public hearing, staff is recommending the board adopt Resolution Number 2021-08-04 authorizing and providing for the issuance, sale, and award of two series of solid waste revenue and refunding bonds.
Anyone sign up?
Mr. Robinson?
So for starters, let me just say I'm also appreciative of what you've done for the county debt. I recognize that, and I commend you for that. But I want to speak against this particular resolution. And the reason being, we've had here tonight, obviously, these interns, and we talk about how what a great job they have. Excellent, the teachers and all the people that put it on, that's a great idea. I'm all behind that. But what are we setting them up for? So as I've alluded to in other elements, research is my wheelhouse. That's what I do for a living. So I did some research, and I discovered, well, first of all, I discovered in the candidates' meeting put on by the county just a few weeks ago, we were told, anyone who was there, a few of you were anyway, that what they needed for the landfill to take care of the garbage was $7 million. This is only a number 46, I believe this was a PowerPoint presentation, slide number 46, given to me by the county. Seven million is at the very bottom, total needed. It's in bold print. And we were told, no worries. The money we're taking in from Martinsville and Bedford is going to be nine million, so we're not only going to pay off the seven million in less than the timeframe we're given, but we're going to have two million to boot. So we'll have money to spend there in addition to the garbage fee, which is supposedly paying for the operation of the landfill. I don't want to get into that tonight. So then I get the paper last week, I believe, as she said in the newspaper, Chatham Tribune, said we're now seeking 10 million. Now, tonight, admittedly, it was dropped by a million. We're still only breaking even. The question comes to my mind, which one is it? So are we a board of integrity? Are we going to be transparent to the people? Are we going to pay this off before it's due? Or are we actually going to pay it off in two different segments? As she has stated, it's going to take two trajectories. And according to your work session that I listened to earlier online, you said one would be paid off by 2028, that's seven years down the road, and the other one, 2036. How many of you expect to be on the board in 2036? Are you kicking it to these young people? Maybe they're the ones who need to be creative and innovative with an approach. I'm asking you because I have children. I'm asking you because I have grandchildren. We were also told at the candidates' meeting, the landfill was good for 70 more years. We wouldn't be here. It's a good point. I probably won't be here in 70 years. But I can assure you, somebody will be, and they'll have to take care of this mess. I'm against this particular bond. I think we need to go back to the drawing board. I think we need to go back and figure out how we can do this without keep kicking the can down the road. It's the old idea of where we're going to refinance the debt we already had. It sounds to me like it's taking one credit card and paying off another credit card. What's it going to be, gentlemen? I'm not in favor of it. We have a courthouse to build. We have a jail to build. We have all this stuff coming up. We have to deal with Cherrystone Lake. Where's it going?
Got to wrap it up, Ms. Robinson.
Where is it going? And to add insult to injury, according to the latest survey, Pennsylvania County, just Pennsylvania County, lost 4.9% of its population in the last nine years. Where's the tax revenue coming from? If we're bleeding off people, where are the tax revenue coming from? Are we going to go further and further in debt? Or are we going to deal with it now?
Time's up. Thank you. Anybody else sign up?
That's it.
Okay. I will close the public hearing at 8:01, and Entertainer Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-08-04 authorizing and providing for the issuance of sale and award of two series solid waste system revenue and refunding bonds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say that, you know, the two communities that we accept garbage for, we get a revenue of $1.8 million. The bond issues, we're going to pay about $900,000 a year, I believe, on these bonds that we're taking out. So we're going to have more than plenty of money to pay this issue off down the road, but what we're trying to do is accumulate enough money to make all the improvements, the three compactor sites, the money we need to open a new cell, and all these things take a big lump of money that we don't have. So with the revenues we're getting over the years, we're going to get this thing paid off. So to me, it's a no-brainer to go out and get all these projects done with the amount of money we need right now instead of waiting, doing it piecemeal down the road. It's going to cost more money if we were to take each separate project and try to pay it out of our general fund. So for me, this is a no-brainer to go ahead and spend, get these bonds issued and get the projects done, and then start paying them off.
Any other comments? I have a few. I echo the same comments as Mr. Scares, and anybody that understands deeply finance, when you can borrow money at 1.85% on this bond, and you're bringing in 1.8 million versus paying out 900,000, money will never be this cheap again. If we don't do these projects now, they're going to cost us more in the future, which will end up costing our young people's future down the road. There are certain items on this that is a must. We got a sale to close, and we got a sale to open. If we don't do this, then where's the revenue going to come from to pay for opening and closing the sale? We also have a disparity within the county that actually you've heard from Mr. Farmer before up in his district and the Gretna district, because they don't have collection sites at the same quality that you see in the southern end of the county. So for the citizens of Gretna, this is a big win, because they will now be able to pay for theirs opportunities to move them to at the same level. I believe every taxpayer in Pennsylvania County should have exactly the same quality of service throughout the county, not be subject to, I'm good, you're bad, you're paying more, I'm getting less. That's just not fair to me. And from a financial perspective, this is absolutely sound financial judgment. If you looked at any financial planner in the country that looked at this deal, they would say this is a smart operation, because you're borrowing money cheaper than what it's going to cost you if you keep kicking it down the road to do these projects that are absolutely a must for the success of this county. And I apologize to our citizens that maybe we don't do as good a job as we possibly could in disseminating all the information that you need to be making decisions. That's why I encourage everybody to watch the work, the work sessions, and to come out and ask the questions. I admire you, brother, for asking the questions and listening, and I understand your opinion and I respect your opinion. However, you know, that is, finance is in my wheelhouse. I can break your numbers down with anybody. This is a sound financial decision for Pennsylvania County, and it's sound for our citizens to be treated fairly from one end of the county to the other. And I certainly believe anybody, whether they in Stanton River or in Bachelor's Hall, should be getting the same services completely. Thank you. We got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. We will open public hearing for the FY22 County Budget Amendments at 8:06.
So Virginia Code Section 15.2-2507 states that any locality may amend its budget to adjust the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the current fiscal year as shown in the currently adopted budget as prescribed by Section 15.2-2504. However, any such amendment that exceeds 1% does require a public hearing to hear citizen input on those said amendments. So we did circulate this notice in the Star Tribune on August the 4th, which meets the seven-day legal notice requirement, and there was a public hearing notice that included all of those budget amendments, and you could come by the office and see the detail that was behind those different amendments that are requested. We did discuss each of these. We did discuss each of these at length at the work session this afternoon. There was one that was recommended to be left off until you all received more information. So the total of those amendments were twenty-seven million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, seven thirty-nine and forty-one cent before that was removed. So after tonight's public hearing, if everything goes well and you all want to adopt what you discussed this afternoon, the total that you would be approving is twenty-seven million, oh eight four, four three seven, forty-one. And that's removing the WI8 grant of ninety-one thousand, three oh two.
Okay. Anybody sign up?
Good evening, Chairman, board members. My name is Willie Fitzgerald and I live in the Banister District. And yes, I have some concerns about the budget. I would start first with what happened to the money that the commission were receiving when the board erupted and disbanded us? What happened to the compensation that we were getting at that time? What happened to the millions of dollars that the service authority had in this budget at that particular time? Then I have a concern that some of the citizens approached me about, some of the citizens in this county making less than a thousand dollars a month from Social Security. And they are having to live on that when groceries going up, gas is going up, and the latest inflection rate, uh, infection rate was five percent. Is it fair to continue to impose such tax increase on them, such as the landfill fee, which was a hundred and twenty dollars tax on citizens of Pennsylvania County, to bring, and then Henry County bring their way to our landfill at probably a cheaper rate than what we as citizens of the county are paying? Having also received a proposed fifty percent meal tax increase on citizens in this county, that some of them living off a fifty percent tax, uh, a thousand dollars a month, Social Security, is it right to continue to increase that? Then seeing this board to ask the school board to ask citizens for a one percent tax increase in November, continue to impose all these fees upon citizens of this county that's living on less than a thousand dollars a month? And then seeing some of citizens making twenty-five thousand dollar increase on their pay scale during the year, is it fair to continue to do this to poor people in this county? Then to advocate and do jobs that most of us in the county doesn't know what certain individuals are making, that you create new jobs and we don't know what those new jobs are and what their salaries are? Where is all this money coming from? And don't continue to impose all these things upon poor people in this county without some kind of consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else sign up?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Our closed public hearing at eight eleven and entertain the board's pleasure.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that twenty-seven million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, forty-one cents be approved and appropriated to the fiscal year 2022 county budget as detailed in the attached fiscal year 2022 county budget amendment spreadsheet.
Second.
Those aren't the right numbers.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that number.
All right, do you need the other number that I've got?
Yes.
Twenty-seven million, oh eighty-four, four thirty-seven, forty-one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion?
I have one question, Ms. Vanderhyde. These changes do not create any additional tax burden on our citizens. Not any tax burden on our citizens. No additional taxes, right? Okay, thank you.
Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business?
Mr. Hahn.
New business?
Yep, Mr. Farmer added a topic called Cool Branch Funding Discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just to give a little history before I make a motion, my memory is not the best, but I think it was at least two years ago that Cool Branch came to us for the request of some money for two apparatuses, one for an ambulance, one for a fire truck. And I think that really dove this board into looking at the uniqueness of what Cool Branch is, with how it's located. It runs calls, of course, in our county and it also runs calls in our neighboring county of Franklin. So through a lot of discussion, a lot of negotiations, trying to find a common solution that was best for both, unfortunately, we just aren't there yet. So the good news is this board still wants to stick behind a commitment made two years ago and try to do our part to help Cool Branch move forward. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that all donations that are raised by the Cool Branch Fire and Rescue start in July one of 2021, runs through September thirtieth of 2021, that this board matches with an amount not to exceed of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion?
Second.
It's been seconded.
Oh, pardon me then.
I think Vic's got the second.
I've been pretty vocal on this situation because of what we've encountered and the unwillingness for Franklin County to work with Pennsylvania County on this issue, when sixty percent of the calls are actually run in Franklin County. And I have been pretty clear and been to tons of extra meetings with Mr. Farmer, who has worked diligently to try to resolve the issues. And been pretty emphatic that I wouldn't support anything that Franklin County didn't do their fair share. Well, I'm going to definitely support this tonight, because in my view, the citizens of Franklin County have been the largest donors of these funds that we're talking about matching. And it's very unfortunate that citizens have had to take it upon themselves to do the work of what their municipal governing body should have been doing for them. But these citizens have stepped up and raised these funds. And I think we would be derelict not to do our fair share in Pennsylvania County, since these folks are actually paying quite a bit of extra taxes that they're willing to put on themselves. You can call it anything you want, but that's truly what they're doing. Because they're paying their Franklin County taxes and not getting those services. So I'm all about supporting our fire and rescue anyway and saving lives. And I think this is an effort to do that. So, Mr. Farmer, I'm proud and honored to support this effort and the work that Cool Branch does. And I want to tip my hat to those Franklin County citizens that have stepped up and done the work and raised money. And that included a few Pennsylvania County citizens also, our dual citizens. But they've done a wonderful job, they want to keep Cool Branch alive and we certainly do too. So I will be supporting that based on those citizens' actions.
Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Matters from Work Section, we got Finance Committee additions, right?
Yes, sir, there's two items from Finance Committee. They dealt with our wage study, I mean, our wage discussion and the ARPA fund usage. And I believe Mr. Davis has two motions for consideration from there.
Okay, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make the motion that I made in the Finance Committee due to the fact of the overall ability where we can pay with CARES funds that's coming from the state level. And I think it's an opportunity to help our fire and EMS personnel. I want to put in motion one million dollars set aside for the fire and EMS equipment, that it will be meted out and considered through the Fire and EMS Commission that we have in place that's doing a great job. And then secondly, a three thousand dollar one-time bonus to all law enforcement and deputies, landfill operators, one through the twenty-fourth grade level, councilor may have to get me correct on this, all of those level jobs, those that are making, the deputies as well, and the other personnel that was made in the original motion. I don't recall it all, I only have a few of these. But I want to make that motion.
Second.
And just to clarify, these funds are coming from the ARPA money, which is the second tranche of the federal money. The first one under President Trump was the CARES Act. This is coming from ARPA, which is the federal program in the Biden administration.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
First and foremost, most people, most of the public wouldn't know this, perhaps, unless they, you know, stayed in tune. And I do echo the same sentiments of Mr. Warren of getting involved. I want to thank the gentleman down here with his lovely bride that they're here. And he's here, Mr. Chuck Angier and his wife. And Mr. Chuck Angier is here quite often, you know. We probably need to give him a word, because he's gave us insight. And he's brought business to this county, that gentleman alone right there. And that's the kind of improvement, as well as involvement, we need in this, in our meetings, because it means a lot to us. And with that said, I want to thank everyone that's doing their part. And we have an opportunity to do what we need to do and do the right thing. I did not make, I did not make this recommendation nor movement for any public popularity. I didn't do it because I wanted praise from anybody. I'd probably catch a whole lot of flack about it. Welcome to politics, young folk, welcome to the legal field. But we got a lot of people that's been left out from the last time that we gave monies out. And I think this is an opportunity to bring that back into play. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis, I think we need to unpack your motion. Just to be clear, at the Finance Committee meeting, you talked about three thousand dollars for public safety.
Okay, thank you.
Includes deputies?
Thank you for the rundown.
Nine-one-one dispatchers?
Deputies, nine-one-one dispatchers.
Sanitation workers. Everybody on the front line.
DSS.
DSS. And then the second tranche of money was fifteen hundred dollars, correct? For all county employees in grades one through twenty-four. So that hits the majority of the lesser-paid county employees. And that bonus wouldn't be prorated for part-time employees based on the hours they work.
That's what you understood too, because you seconded the motion, right, Mustang?
I did, but as he was going through the list of those that would be receiving the bonus, I thought nine-one-one was on the list, our dispatchers.
Yes, they are.
Okay, just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Thank you.
They're eligible for the three thousand.
Mr. Chairman, did we emphasize that that is not a perpetual raise, that's just a bonus?
One-time bonus.
Yes.
I made that in the motion.
Let's be sure everybody's on the same page, because it's gotten confusing. We actually have two motions in one, because he made it as one. We're using ARPA money, which is federal funds that are coming to us, that if we don't spend them, they go back to the federal government.
That's right.
Okay? And there's only certain parameters that you can spend these funds. It's not like we can put them in the general fund and go pay the light bill. You can't do that, okay? They're very specific. The criterias that have been mentioned in these are permissible. So even the million dollars that will go to fire and rescue for them to apply for through the Fire Commission will have to fit in the definition of what's available legally from ARPA funds, okay? Want to be clear with everybody so they understand what's happened. You got all this information before thirty, which if you listened, like Mr. Robertson did back there, you heard that. But, and then these bonuses are one-time bonuses, primarily for public safety, frontline folks, DSS, which is going into the homes and doing all that, and not exceeding the Level twenty-four.
That's right.
So the Level twenty-four, it might cover one director, I think they said.
Maybe.
Maybe. But the rest of the upper echelon of the staff does not get this bonus. This is really for the people that are direct, I want to say more hands-on with our public and our citizens. So not highly compensated folks. So I want to be clear with everyone on that. And we talked about this at length at four thirty. So, but I wanted you all that are here tonight in attendance to be able to understand what we were saying and doing. And these are ARPA funds, these are not county taxpayer dollars.
That's right.
Okay? These are not county taxpayer dollars. Okay. Any other discussion, comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment. I want to make this statement to the community that when COVID hit and we know what we had to go through, everyone did, everybody was taxed. I mean, taxed in the sense of having to do a lot more and stay at home, of all things, was this, that our staff in this county was in such a better position as far as fiscal responsibility was concerned, that the ten million just added to the success of this county. And I do appreciate the staff doing a great job. Yes, sir, and that's it, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to board member reports. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you well know, after twenty-long years of fighting, we pulled out of Afghanistan. So I'm going to refrain from any political statement, except I'm very grateful for the men and women that have served us so well. The sacrifice is unmeasurable. There's a lot of Gold Star families out there. So in addition to our loss, please remember the Afghan people. I have five family members that are suffering with COVID as I speak. And they're doing fairly well and I'm thankful for that. But I'd also like for you to remember Bonnie Jones. She's a seventeen-year Danville police officer that's in intensive care, suffering from COVID and short of a miracle, well, she needs a miracle. On a brighter note, I'd like to honor Mr. and Mrs. James Thornton of the Cascade Community. They've been together for sixty-three years, is that not wonderful? And their daughter-in-law, Yvonda, who went through Lamaze with, well, me and my wife went through Lamaze with her and her husband. She just retired from DCC after thirty-one years. Fine people. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have two events that folks in the Callens, Gretna area can get on their calendars. One is September the eleventh, the Gretna Fire and Rescue will be hosting a golf tournament at Cedars Country Club. And also on September the eleventh, the Cool Branch Rescue will be hosting their annual Truck Raffle fundraiser. So especially excited for that, trying to challenge all the citizens out there to do all the fundraising they can with Cool Branch so they can take advantage of this matching opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Dobbins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the folks that showed up tonight. Appreciate you all coming. Always a pleasure to see Chuck and his wife, they're always here. They come to our GOP meetings, appreciate everything they do. They come to work session a lot, thank them for that. I want to thank the folks on the front row right here that young man got up and just hit one out of the park, I'm going to tell you. And I'm so proud of you. just hit one out of the park, I'm going to tell you, and I'm so proud of you. Appreciate the work that you guys did for us this summer. Thank you so much. Thank you for the program that was started, and hopefully we can continue this on, because they'll be the leaders up here one day, hopefully. And I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. Let's also remember that before we meet again, we'll be, it'll be twenty years since the towers in New York fell and in DC and Pennsylvania, where the planes crashed. So thankful for our freedoms that we have in this country. There's so many countries that do not have that, and I am so proud. We live in the greatest country, I think, in the world, bar none, even though this country, to me, doesn't look like it did ten years ago, some of the things that's going on. But I'm still saying, and I think that we live, I think, in the greatest place that we could live on earth, and I'm thankful that I was born here, and thankful for our freedoms. I want to thank your staff too, for setting the meetings up and getting everything ready, doing all the prep work for us, appreciate that. And I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Miller.
Yes, sir, I have a quick comment. First of all, again, we also want to appreciate everybody that has come to be a part of the meeting, and all of those who are listening by way of internet. And I would like to let everybody know that on September fifteenth, September fifteenth, at the hour of eleven o'clock AM, the first elected African-American member of this body, the Board of Supervisors, Pennsylvania County, will be honored with a bridge dedication. And that bridge is the curved bridge on Route Twenty-Nine in Blair's, going, of course, the one going over the bypass. And Mr. Pritchett's widow, Mrs. Lily Pritchett, and her son Cedric will be here as the honored guest, and it would be very much appreciated if all of the members of our community who knew Mr. Pritchett or even heard of Mr. Pritchett, again, who was the first African-American member of the board for the Bannister District, will be honored. And the ceremony will be taking place at our community center on Route Twen- I'm sorry, on Main Street across from Davenport Energy. And we look forward to this being a very pleasant and a memorable experience for the community. I want to say also in closing that I am indeed very appreciative of this entire board, because when the vote was taken to honor Mr. Pritchett, one hundred percent of the board was in agreement. And I speak for myself and also on the behalf of the African-American community, thank you to the members of the board for that consideration.
Mr. Davis. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
I want to thank the staff once again for the dynamic job that they've been doing here of late, not to take anything away from the work they have done already in the past, but I, I am thankful for every facet that makes up the diamond of Pennsylvania County, if you might, if you don't mind my metaphor. And I could say a lot of other things, as the chairman would say, he wants me to keep it short and sweet, but I do want to thank the staff, who are the worker bees that do the work. But most of all, I'm thankful for a good day today, for we have many exciting things that will have to be announced in the future that, that is looking at our county and unprecedented, unprecedented times we're living in. And I thank the staff and the personnel, the economic development, as well as Ms. Maraxdale and the rest, Caleb, Mr. Bumper and all, the IT Department, Assistant County Administrator, yes, sir, you even, Colonel, that we're looking for some exciting information real, real soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman Skares.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I do want to make a political statement in, as we watched Afghanistan fall apart directly due to the feckless leadership of the old Biden regime, I would ask you to keep the innocent people of Afghanistan in your prayers. America has no idea the demonic evil that's getting ready to be unleashed on that people with the Taliban taking back control of that nation. Again, I watch with despair as the cities that I have served in, as a government contractor, whether it was Bagram Air Force Base or Kandahar, and finally Kabul this weekend, fall to these evil doers. I, I just, please keep the innocent people of Afghanistan in your prayers. On a different note, I just want to let the public know I have the highest regard for the integrity of our county staff and of the guys that serve on this board. A comment was made that we're a good old boys' club, and that we have favors that are getting dished out to people in, in the public. All I wanted, want to tell the public, if you know of anything or think there's any kind of malfeasance going on with this county, contact me, or contact someone on this board, or contact Mr. Smitherman. He's gotten, been one of the key factors of why this county is going in the right direction. And I know none of us would put up with any kind of malfeasance or favor giving. And again, please contact us and deal with facts, not slander. Come with, to us with facts so we can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skares. I have a few things. Well, a gentleman that wants to be Supreme Court Justice, my son's a lawyer, all I'm going to say is, don't plan on having a life that first year of law school. I, I watched him lose hair, I watched him lose sleep and all, so, but you make it through the first year, it's not too bad. So I really hope you have great success and hope you reach all your dreams. What, what a wonderful thing for Pennsylvania County to have a Supreme Court Justice from Pennsylvania County. So we're, we're rooting for you. Also, I want to recognize, we, we get a report every, every week, and I was remiss in not doing this earlier, but we had four of our EMS services that really were standard bearers for all to try to reach. I was really pleased in reading the report about how much our EMS calls had picked up in not only, I'm not happy about the additional volume, you'd hope nobody has to call, but we certainly picked up a, a great percentage on the number of calls that are answered from the first-serving agency, which I thought was wonderful. But we had some that were really, and I may get the order a little messed up because I did it from memory, but Gretna, Blair's, Vatchwell's Hall, and Tunstall, from a percentage of responding to the calls were the standard bearers. And I just thought, I thought that just spoke volumes, because those volunteers throughout the county do such a great job. So I was really happy to see tonight that we were able to set another million dollars aside to, to service those folks. So, I mean, that's a wonderful thing. And if you don't take time to read Caleb's report, you should, it's always pretty interesting when he does the podcast, or watch it, or read when he sends it out. And I thought it was a wonderful one, he just sent out about Cascade and the turnaround they've had there, from, from basically being gone to, to really being back and doing a great job and thriving. So, you know, thanks to those folks. And you saw the same turnaround pretty much at Gretna. They were about gone, and now their, their highest call volume, I think, we get, and their response time's almost a hundred percent. So, I mean, great things have happened, and I too would like to thank Chuck, he serves on the Fire Commission, and I think all of that of trying to get everybody together and work for the common good of serving the citizens of Pennsylvania County is, is, is all doing a wonderful job. And we certainly, certainly could not do without our volunteers. And I was really pleased to see this board step up and authorize the bonuses and approve the bonuses to the night for all of our public safety people, including the Sheriff's Department, that we actually, as a county, pay for a portion of those folks too, that are not covered by the, by the comp board. At a time when so much of our country is hollering, "Defund our law enforcement and all," this board is saying, "No."
That's right.
We want to fund them.
That's right.
And we also, if you go back and look at the pay study, considerable pay increases was given to those folks. I know it was pretty disheartening just a few years ago when we had deputies that couldn't pay, they wouldn't have had much of a check if they'd had to pay for family coverage. So a lot of their families was qualifying for subsidized compensation from the lack of what they were being paid. And we don't need that in our county. So I've been really, really pleased that I've always served on boards here for the last almost five, almost six years now, that there's never been one of those that didn't support our law enforcement. So I'm happy to say I, I live in a county that believes in supporting our law enforcement from one county to the other. So that's all I have to say tonight. Mr. Smitherman, you have anything?
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to say how, what a pleasure it was for all of us to have the interns. I, I will, I will say how wrong I was. I thought, man, this is going to be tough.
Oh, my goodness, this is for the record. He's wrong.
How wrong I was, this is going to be a drag, we're going to have to find work for them. It was the exact opposite. These are some of the brightest young people.
There you go.
I could have ever imagined us getting, and is Pranav still here? Yeah. I mean, Kim, I mean, the man's ready to be the finance director.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry for Kim.
That's right.
And it, it was just such a pleasure to see them every day, to see what energy they brought to our workplace, the actual work they did that was meaningful, which was my big concern, is that we wouldn't have meaningful work for them. But it was a overwhelming success and a pleasure to work with all of you, and I wish you all good luck. That ended up being a pleasant surprise at how well that program went, and we've already ordered a plaque to say Supreme Court Justice came from Pennsylvania County. It'll be installed later. That's how much confidence we have in heaven. I do want to congratulate the board on, you don't know it yet, but we finished the year in June thirtieth. We had an outstanding year financially. I would submit to you that our financial wherewithal, our financial status, and our operational excellence right now is as good as it's probably ever been. We were very fortunate, but we also made a lot of really good decisions in 2021 that really helped the county for the long term. One of those decisions was solidify this evening, which is our solid waste borrowing at a ridiculously unbelievable one point eight-five percent or less, we'll find out. We anticipate a seven point two, I think, million-dollar borrowing. We are going to take care of a tremendous amount of capital investment that will help this county for many, many years, that otherwise would not have been paid for through our one hundred and twenty-dollar fee. We would have had found other resources to pay for these critical improvements, like a bulldozer, like a compactor, like closing our cell, like opening a new cell. And most importantly to me, like Mr. Warren said, bringing the folks of the Callens-Gretna District, the, the services that they deserve, the services they're paying for, those that use the Climax Road forty intersection where there's, I think, thirteen green boxes, or the Whittles location off Twenty-Nine, where there's another ten or more green boxes, they are a sight to see. They're no fun to use, they smell, they're dirty, they're always full. These folks deserve the amenities that everyone south of Chatham has, and I'm very proud that the board is doing that. Additionally, the folks of the Stanton River District will receive a brand-new compactor that will replace the boxes at Men's Store, I believe. So they will get great services up in the northeast of the, of the county. So these, these are really important investments, they're smart investments. As we talked before, you don't pay cash for investments that have seven, eight, fifteen, forty-year lives. You, you borrow the money and you make money because you're borrowing money, cheaper than it is to spend later. Because a dollar in your pocket today is more important than a dollar in your pocket tomorrow, and that's what we're doing by borrowing these funds. It's smart business, it's the way business is run, and this Board of Supervisors runs a twenty, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-million-dollar business. And that's not running a convenience store, that's not running an auto parts store, that's not running a nonprofit, that's running a two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-million-dollar business, and that is nothing to sneeze at. And I appreciate the importance that we place and that the board places on our fiscal health, which is outstanding today. I did have the great pleasure of meeting the, most of the candidates that want to serve on this board and, and spent several hours with them, getting through a lot of information. It is a difficult job that you hold, it's very complicated information to handle. Your executive team, for example, we're five of us on the team, there are five master's degree on our team. It takes a lot of experience and a lot of education to run a public sector business, and it is a business. We operate by different rules. Our rules are citizens and service first, not profit, but we do care about reducing the cost of our citizens' impact, or our impact on our citizens, I should say. And the board is extremely proactive on finding diversified ways to bring in revenue and not utilize the real estate tax to the extent it has been used in previous years. And we are continuing to work on that on a daily basis. It is frustrating, though, this board has put a humongous emphasis on public relations and on transmitting information outwardly, and on being transparent. And the amount of outward flow that this organization puts out, I would argue is second to none, with a very small staff. So, but we can send the information out as much as we can, but it has to be a two-way street, and the citizen wants to, needs to, want to understand the information we put out. And we're having some disconnect there that's becoming obvious in many areas. And it's frustrating to hear public comment on a budget amendment where the comments were absolutely not fact-based, which absolutely had no relevance to the budget amendment, and in most cases had no relevance to this organization. And I'm not sure how, and it's a symptom of our society, it's a symptom of America, that we have stopped participating in our democracy, and we want others to do the work, but when the others do the work, we want to tell them they're doing it wrong. And it's a lack of civics, it's a lack of, it's a lack of engagement, and it's a lack of our duty as a former Boy Scout and Eagle Scout, current Eagle Scout. It's part of our duty as citizens to be engaged in our government. And coming out of the woodwork once every four years to take some pot shots is not how we participate in government. It is being there every month, every meeting, just like the Angiers. And, and those that stay at home and watch our things, and those that I talk to that call me and ask me questions, and I wish we had more of a two-way conversation, and we're going to keep working on our public relations efforts so that we can provide everything our citizens need to understand the business of their government. I'm super proud of the, initiated by Mr. Farmer to extend the Olive Branch to Cool Branch, and I'm terribly impressed with the people of the Cool Branch and Pinhook community that have come together and raised significant funds, where our counterparts have somewhat turned a blind eye to their needs, the citizens have pulled themselves up by the bootstraps, and they are making sure that that department is successful. And I am very congratulatory and appreciative of our board for meeting those citizens where they are and giving them services that they are not receiving from their home county. And finally, not only a thank you on behalf of those affected employees by Supervisor Davis's premium pay motion, I am, I'm appreciative of the creative way that Mr. Davis approached this matter. As we discussed in the work session, the eleven point seven million dollars is not going to be easy to spend. We are trying to make the most impactful decisions on how to make that happen. And any creative decisions that any board member has toward that end, let's talk about it. We know that there are some public safety needs that we hope to satisfy. We absolutely want to satisfy- satisfy. We absolutely want to satisfy significant, if not all, of our broadband issue in this county over the next few years, utilizing these funds. And we need to continue to be creative, and try to find the most impactful and direct way to help our citizens through this federal stimulus program. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Smitherman. Mr. Hunt, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir. David talked enough for both of us, I think.
Then I'll declare the meeting.